What's that?
You have to mute this and turn the volume all over again.
Sorry, I'll.
Okay, you should be fine.
Okay. A call to order this August twenty-six, twenty twenty-five Fairfield Plant and Zoning Commission meeting to order. Start with our meeting minutes from August twelfth and August nineteenth. We just have the four of us and Commissioner Harrison present, right? Nobody else? Any, are there any ultimates?
Nope.
Uh, may I have a motion?
Nope.
Uh, may I have a motion?
I can move on in nineteen. That was at eight twelve.
Right at twelve. Commissioner, uh, she's on, Commissioner Harrison's on.
I was, yeah, sorry, I wasn't here on the nineteenth. But was here on the twelve.
Do them separately.
All right, let's call eight twelve. I'm not sure if, well, who is not here for eight twelve? We don't have a quorum then for eight twelve. Uh, how about eight nineteen? Eight nineteen, all right, so I'll. Let's, let me re- amend, I'll withdraw my calling, I'll call. Meeting minutes for August nineteenth, twenty twenty-five. Commissioner Corcello.
Move to approve.
Sir Second. Commissioner Levy Seconds, Commissioner Corcello.
That was good, nothing further.
Any comments or questions on the minutes for August nineteenth? We put it to a vote. All those in favor, please say aye or raise your hand.
I'm abstaining, because I wasn't here that day.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I thought you were, my mistake. So it passes for, I don't know, like, yes votes. The best present and Commissioner Harrison abstains. Um, let's table, we need to vote to table or we don't have a quorum anyways, can we just move? Eight twelve minutes to the next meeting, do you want a motion?
Uh, I think. Motion.
Yeah. Commissioner Harrison moves to table, uh, minutes from August twelfth, Commissioner Corcello seconds. As I said, no quorum here, so let's, anything further? All those in favor, please say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
Pass unanimously. Next item, twenty-seven eighty and twenty-eight hundred Reading Road, partial release of TPZ Lee, or portion of property currently located at twenty-six, twenty-eight hundred Reading Road with, which is pending purchase and transfer to twenty-seven eighty Reading Road. Is there a?
Yep.
Or Mr. Mullins, remember?
John, if you could just bring up the, um, map, please. So this is really just a legal clarification, um. Twenty-eight hundred Reading Road was the subject of a subdivision where there is an open space, uh, requirement to be paid for the, for the property. And, um, twenty-eight hundred Reading Road is, um, is actually going to be selling a small portion of property to twenty-seven eighty Reading Road. So in terms of the title review that was done, they're just trying to alleviate the obligation for, um, that payment for the small sliver that's being uh, transferred over to twenty-seven eighty Reading Road, which was, which will be part of twenty-eight hundred Reading Road. I hope that makes sense. It's just a small sliver transfer, but they don't want that requirement to go with the sliver transfer. And Attorney Peers requested that we bring it before the commission and recognize, uh, the release of that obligation, just for that portion of the sliver.
Staff comment is to, is, uh, in support of that?
Yes.
Okay.
Because it still resides with that primary parcel at twenty-eight hundred Reading.
Uh, Attorney Peers make, have any comments on that or opinions, or is it just a, have the?
Attorney Peers, uh, reviewed the, um, the waiver that's in front of you to sign, should the commission agree to, uh, approving that.
Nice question.
Let's get a motion on, I just wanted to see what staff had said about it first, um. Commissioner Corcello.
Move to approve.
To approve, is there a second?
Second.
Second Commissioner Levy, go ahead, Commissioner Corcello.
So, uh, just to be clear, um, approving this motion, I mean, the motion just doesn't specify anything beyond partial release, but I, you just mentioned, I know there's the document that, uh, the chair has to sign, so I'm, I'm, I assume that approving the motion as is, just a partial release, will the document will take care of the rest of the details, as far as everything you just explained.
Yes.
Comfortable with that one, staff, staff's recommendation.
Commissioner Levy?
Just to make sure I understand, since basically, you know, the sliver that's being conveyed out, the obligation will still remain in full force and effect on the dominant piece of conveying it.
That is correct.
And it won't impair the security on that obligation.
That's correct.
Other questions, comments from staff or from the commission, excuse me? Can we put this to a vote? Not as straightforward as we see, but really clear now. All those in favor, please say aye or raise your hand. Four hands and. Commissioner Harrison?
I approve, sorry.
That's okay.
Sorry, raised my hand, yeah, thank you.
Passes unanimously. Okay. Moving to old business, we have at least four addresses, uh, worth of, um, uh, line items for decision. Uh, I am recused on Viro, um. The best thing for me to do is to go in order of Viro, because Viro goes first, right?
I mean, if you both Viro's, so.
I think that makes, yeah, to see if the, how the commission wants to handle it, but I'm gonna all step aside and let you handle the Viro's then.
All right, uh, I'm gonna call the next, the first three items together, um. Zoning Regulation Amendment, application of attorney Stephen Bellis on behalf of contract purchasers, one oh eight Viro LLC to create a new section five point three for a Viro Development District. One oh eight Viro Street Zone Change Application of Attorney Stephen Bellis on behalf of contract purchasers, one oh eight Viro LLC to establish a Viro Development District on land presently zoned Residence B. And one oh eight Viro Street Zoning Compliance Application of Attorney Stephen Bellis on behalf of contract purchasers, one oh eight Viro LLC pertaining to a new one hundred unit residential development pursuant to section eight thirty G of the Connecticut General Statutes. Um, and just because we have, uh, just the four of us, uh, Commissioner Harrison, I think you were at two of the three, you're up to speed on this.
I'm up to speed, um, I have a comment when, when I'm called on.
Okay, let's get a, a motion on the table first.
Ready to put motion?
Yeah, uh, Commissioner Randolph.
Um, I, I make the motion that we deny without prejudice of these, you know, these applications.
Thank you, do you have a second?
I'll second.
Uh, Commissioner, uh, Harrison, uh, Commissioner Randolph, please.
Um, I'm recommending that the commission denies the application for one oh eight Viro Street without prejudice. Denial is based upon non-compliance with, um, Connecticut Fire Code eighteen point two point three point two point two. I'll, I'll give you all of this in writing, um. I'm, I'm reading from this last page. Yeah, I'm, I'm reading from here, and that, that's the whole thing, so I'll, I'll send it to you. But, um, for non-compliance with the Connecticut State Fire Code eighteen point two point three point two point two and eighteen point two point three point four, requiring perimeter access within one hundred fifty feet and approved turnarounds for dead end roads over one hundred and fifty feet. Um, this is gonna be long, so. Uh, the application for one way Viro Street proposed a hundred unit affordable housing project, uh, and they contend that turnarounds are not required because fire trucks can stop within a hundred, a hundred and thirty feet to a hundred thirty-seven feet of garage entrances. And that only one travel exceeds a hundred fifty feet plus fifty feet must turnaround be provided, that's the, what the applicant contested. The applicant also argues that fire access compliance falls within the fire marshal's sole jurisdiction, citing a June eighteenth, twenty twenty-five email from Fire Marshal Cronin. Both arguments are inconsistent with Connecticut State Fire Safety Code and the commission's statutory duty under, uh, eight thirty G. The legal standard under eight thirty G permits denial only if the commission finds that the project presents substantial public health or safety concerns, or that those concerns clearly outweigh the need for affordable housing, and they cannot be resolved by reasonable conditions. The commission must weigh all evidence in the record, even if the fire marshal did not initially object. Uh, the Connecticut Fire Safety Code adopted under CGS twenty-nine dash uh, two ninety-two incorporates NFPA, um, twenty eighteen with amendments. The controlling provisions are Connecticut CS, Connecticut State Fire Code, um, it says fire apparatus access roads shall extend to within a hundred and fifty feet of all portions of the first floor exterior walls. And that dead end fire apparatus access roads in excess of one fifty shall be provided with approved provisions for turnaround of fire apparatus. Uh, this is further clarified in Appendix D that says dead end fire apparatus access roads in excess of a hundred fifty feet shall be provided with approved turnarounds. Uh, nothing in these provisions allows for a hundred and fifty feet plus fifty foot rule that was cited by the app, by the applicant, the hundred and fifty feet limit is absolute for dead end access roads. Prestige Associates asserts that because fire trucks can stop a hundred and thirty feet into Viro, a hundred thirty-seven feet into Haley, that the truck is going to notice stop within that hundred and thirty feet uh, without any signage or any indication, and then the firemen are gonna, supposed to walk that last fifty feet. Uh, and therefore turnaround is not required. This interpretation conflates the hundred and fifty perimeter reach rule with a hundred and fifty foot dead end turnaround rule. Uh, and, but they're independent requirements, a truck being within fifty feet of a door does not exempt the road itself from the turnaround requirement if it exceeds a hundred and fifty feet. Prestige also claims that the only, only fire, only the fire marshal decides these issues. While, um, Connecticut General Code and Grant the Fire Marshal Enforcement Authority, um, uh, uh, section eight point two of Connecticut General Statutes gives us authority, um, the zoning commission, the responsibility to weigh whether applications pose substantial health and safety concerns, and courts have confirmed that fire access deficiencies may justify denial. Uh, there's case law around this, in Garden Homes Management versus Fairfield, uh, turnaround adequacy was a central issue. The appellate court affirmed that turnaround adequacy is a valid safety concern. Once a compliant turnaround was added, which is really what we're asking for here, residual objections did not support denial. In Avalon Bay Communities versus Orange, the Supreme Court held that fire access deficiency supported by expert evidence and code provisions may justify denial. And Brentmore Properties versus Trumbull, uh, the court stressed that commissions must connect code non-compliance to operational safety risk, which is the situation we have here. Um, the Fire Marshal's June eighteenth email provides only a general assurance of review and compliance, it's not a formal interpretation. It does not address turnaround requirements, does not waive statutory obligations. The commission remains obligated under eight thirty G. Um, the turnarounds constitute a substantial evidence of safety concern. Viro Street, um, has a two hundred and seventy-five foot travel distance and Haley has a three hundred and thirty-seven five, three, three hundred and thirty-seven foot travel distance, which exceeds the hundred and fifty foot limit for dead end access roads and lacks turnarounds, this violates statute, the fire, the Connecticut State Fire Code, uh, specifically in Appendix D. The applicant's a hundred and fifty foot plus fifty foot interpretation is unsupported by the code. These deficiencies present a substantial safety concern that outweigh the need for affordable housing until corrected. The commission may not, may therefore deny this application without prejudice, allowing resubmission with compliant plans. Uh, that's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Harrison.
Yeah, I, I do wanna thank, um, Commissioner Randolph for your very thoughtful and technical analysis of this application. Um, I, I know that these applications are very hard for us, um, I know it, it's just, it's, it's been a lot, it's been a long year with a lot of applications. Um, but I, I do reject both the project and the regulation change, because I do believe it will create a significant harm to public safety, especially in terms of traffic congestion. Um, I didn't think the applicant, um, adequately, um, showed the significance of the built and unbuilt development in this area that's already been happening. Uh, I think this area would be, this street would be used as a cut through, and, um, there's just, it's just a lot of, um, implications with fire access and emergency, which, um, Commissioner Randolph did talk about. Um, I also don't believe that the ITE is an adequate measure of trip generation for this area or any o- other area of this town. The ITE, I know we talk about this a lot, is an industry standard, but it doesn't properly measure traffic in Fairfield. ITE includes figures submitted from around the nation, but not specific to Fairfield or this neighborhood. I believe for our commission to be fully informed before we decide on these massive projects, we should really hold the applicant accountable to provide us with that customized information, even if, if it goes beyond the so-called industry standards. Each parcel of land is unique, this part, this project is unique, and I really believe we must, um, consider the context of this unique neighborhood and the development happening in this area, there's a lot happening. I think we've had fif- fifteen hundred plus, um, uh, units approved in this area that have not yet been built, so we even have, we haven't felt the pain of those quite yet. So I, I don't think it's quite the end for this applicant, I think he has the ability to make this right. Um, but I don't believe that this commission should feel obligated to approve projects when we don't have the information that we need. Um, personally, I will not participate in helping to create a situation of extreme overuse of this property that I believe will be, will lead to a clearer and, uh, significant jeopardy to public safety based on, uh, primarily on traffic and overflow parking concerns as well as fire access. Um, I, you know, sometimes we don't have, we don't feel like we have a choice in these matters, but we absolutely do have a choice, and our job is to make Fairfield a safe area, a safe town. And I will be voting no, um, and I hope the applicant does come back with a better project and with more, um, with better information for the commission to make a, a, a good decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Levy.
Yes. I, I share, uh, Commissioner Randolph's, uh, you know, uh, thoughts with respect to the, uh, concerns about, uh, public health and safety as it relates to access, uh, for fire vehicles. Um, and, uh, I will, uh, anticipate voting, uh, to deny the application subject to the right to, uh, resubmit with a reasonable accommodation. And I think what's important here is, you know, the interpretation of the fire code, uh, is not the easiest, uh, similar to building codes, and, uh, you know, I'm sure, you know, uh, to build this, uh, obviously the, uh, fire marshal would have to find that there was full compliance, just like any, uh, uh, with a building code issue. Uh, but similarly here, um, well, it's not for us to, uh, you know, have to determine the fine points of the fire code, uh, the, the concern about access, which is reflected in the fire code, uh, is one that does translate into more than just a mere technicality. Uh, we're talking about a situation where you might have, uh, you know, a significant fire going and the need uh, for fire vehicles to be moved, uh, during that emergency. And there's evidence in the record, uh, both in terms of the figuration and placement of the building, the neighbors' comments about how tight it is back there, the condition of Poe Street and Finn Street there, which, I mean, Poe and Finn, that's, that's closer to a trail than it is to a road, um, you know, uh, and you know, to think of that, I mean, and again, there's parking permitted there, uh, so that's also a concern, which could be, of course, be addressed uh, in terms of the parking there, uh, but as it stands now, um, there is no possible, there's no way a vehicle, a fire vehicle could go to the end of either uh, Haley or Barrow Street there and be, uh, uh, able to be moved, uh, from it in an emergency situation other than being forced to back up, which is problematic, and that is a safety concern. And that is a safety concern, uh, which arises uh, be under this situation. And to suggest that, well, on it, well, they only have to drive in a hundred and thirty feet and then they can hike the other fifty. I mean, I think that's ludicrous, uh, to consider that. So I do see it as a real safety concern, uh, and it's one that I think can be addressed. And part of the problem is that the uh, you know, uh, there's no real setbacks here. And it doesn't mean the whole building needs to be redesigned or setbacks changed, uh, you know, uh, on the entire perimeter, but I am sure that a reasonable accommodation might be some slight alteration to the building so as to permit a reasonable setback um, and allowing for this access. I mean, uh, that's something that could easily be done. Uh, while I'm aware that there are cost concerns due to the cost of remediation of this property, the asbestos on the property, um, you know, um, I don't think that the, any alteration in terms of setbacks or redesign of the approaches uh, is going to be of such significance as to impede the financial viability. So to my mind, while we definitely need housing, affordable housing, it's a primary concern. Uh, I fully expect this application will come back. I mean, it'll be up to the applicant as to whether they choose to appeal on this basis uh, or not, uh, or they can take a close look at their plans, uh, which basically to my mind are about as, uh, you know, you couldn't put much more in here if you tried, but maybe they could make a reasonable accommodation, scale it back slightly, uh, so that they can accommodate these safety concerns and at the same time, um, you know, uh, allow uh, affordable housing uh, to be uh, uh, built in this area. Uh, so that's my primary concern and I concur with Commissioner Randolph. Um, and you know, in terms of, you know, I, I expect it'll probably come back. I could be wrong, but there are other concerns that can reasonably be addressed. I think uh, the cupola on top is decorative. Uh, I would expect on any re-submission that that cupola will go, you know, bye-bye. It doesn't add much artistically, and it just adds unnecessary height to the building, which is already high enough. Um, you know, in terms of the parking, you've got, um, you know, uh, two garages here. Um, you know, nobody, you know, residents aren't going to know. Uh, we got parking in, is there a spot in A or is there a spot in B? Uh, so I think any plan uh, that comes back before us uh, should provide that, uh, you know, residents would have assigned parking spots. Uh, the uh, the tandem spots could all be assigned to two bedroom units, and I would expect that a reasonable accommodation might also be to have some sort of parking enforcement, uh, whether an attendant or otherwise, uh, to assure that people are, uh, you know, parking in their designated spots, uh, because otherwise, um, you know, it is so tight back there and having cars between five and six people coming home, one trying to get out of the garage, there's no spots in there, coming back to the other. So those are things that I would expect could easily be addressed in any re-submission. Uh, but again, I think the primary concern is it's not the technical failure perhaps to buy it to conform fire code, but the failure uh, to address the safety, which is uh, you know, and the potential harm to the public uh, by not having reasonable access. And that's, that's what needs to be addressed, and I think the evidence from the neighbors, the, the, uh, the lack of setbacks, uh, the narrowness of the streets on all sides uh, are all substantial evidence that support uh, this concern.
Thank you, Commissioner Levy. Uh, I agree with uh, with everything my fellow commissioners have said. I thank uh, Commissioner Randolph for, for his close reading of the fire code. Um, I think the uh, the item he mentioned, uh, while these codes and statutes are often pretty complicated and difficult to interpret, uh, I thought was fairly straightforward and and plainly written, um, and gives clear guidance that the applicant should follow. Uh, I think as a commission, when there are deficiencies with an eight thirty G application, we typically have an obligation to identify and require reasonable accommodations. I think this is a uh, unique application in that to make those corrections, uh, that would address the health and safety concerns that Commissioner Randolph raised, would require this commission to get into redesigning aspects of the building that I don't think are in our purview. I think there are uh, a number of ways the applicant could uh, amend the building design to uh, to address that issue and provide the required turnaround, and it is not uh, the purview of this commission to uh, to become an additional architect on the project. And so I think it's a reasonable uh, reasonable to send this back to the applicant to take a fresh look at the project and, and make its own determination about how to do that. Um, and, and so I will also be supporting the motion to deny without prejudice. Any other comments by? We put this to a vote, all those in favor of the motion to deny the applications without prejudice, uh, for the reasons stated by Commissioner Randolph, uh, say I or raise your hand.
Aye.
See, four, uh, four votes, the motion passes unanimously. Thank you. I will call the, uh, take the next items out of order, um, to stick with the items that uh, Chair Noonan has refused on, so I will call zoning regulation amendment, application of one oh five Bayrow Street LLC for revision to the zoning regulations to add section five point five Bayrow Residential District to allow the construction of affordable multifamily housing pursuant to section eight thirty G of the general Connecticut General Statutes. One oh five Bayrow Street, three hundred Castle Avenue, application of one oh five Bayrow Street LLC to establish a Bayrow Residential District on land presently zoned residency, and one oh five Bayrow Street, three hundred Castle Avenue, zoning compliance application of one oh five Bayrow Street LLC for compliance with the standards of the Bayrow Residential District to establish a forty-eight unit residential development pursuant to section eight thirty G of the Connecticut General Statutes, uh, shown on plans entitled The Gallery at Bayrow, De Laurentis Development, dated May first, twenty twenty-five, prepared by J. Edwards Associates LLC, two twenty-seven Stepney Road, East in Connecticut, uh, Residence C Zone. And uh, let's see. Commissioner Harrison, you're up to speed on this one, too?
Yes, I am. Thank you.
Okay, can I have a motion on these items, please? Commissioner Randolph?
Uh, I move to approve.
Move to approve, do I have a second? Commissioner Levy?
Um, we've reviewed, I, the commission, I, I've reviewed this project at the same level of scrutiny we did for the neighboring property and the uh, the, the quality of the analysis, the application design, while the building is significantly out of scale with the neighborhood, that's not a criteria that we can use to um, uh, reject a project. The um, the traffic movement, the traffic study and the uh, parking um, were all thoroughly reviewed and do not pose a uh, risk to public safety or harm that would merit rejection. Um, in general, the, the thoughtfulness of this project um, uh, met the criteria of um, a, a project of the scale. And um, again, the project is out of scale with the neighborhood, uh, but that scale alone does not warrant a rejection.
Commissioner Levy?
Yeah, nice. I also reviewed this project and uh, you know, I, I found the uh, design and the proposal to be of, you know, again, while it's large for the area, uh, it does, uh, you know, adequately address, uh, you know, um, you know, uh, the need for affordable housing. It uh, is a much better designed uh, plan, and uh, uh, I do not see any basis for not approving it. Um, you know, just, uh, there might be some recommendations, uh, which were made by staff, which should be um, included. Um, would be, um, again, uh, parking spaces within the garage to be specifically uh, assigned. Um, the garage driveway should be at least twenty-four feet wide. Um, a deed restriction for the set aside development to be recorded on the land records. Um, and no parking zone striping is shown on the schematic site plan, and that the stormwater detention system be designed to the satisfaction of the town's engineering department. But with those uh, recommendations, uh, or there's, I guess those could be conditions, uh, which shouldn't be a problem as far as the approval.
Mr. Chair, if I, if I might also add some recommendations to the zoning regulation language as well, should you choose to approve this? Um, uh, first and foremost, if we could, um, for the record, just indicate that we have a pending zoning regulation, uh, set of zoning regulations that go into effect on September sixth. And um, although any discussion of this references the applicant's original numbering sequence, uh, this section would be section thirty-nine of the zoning regulations that are going into effect with other sections reordered accordingly. Um, and then um, there was something identified by Mark Barnhart of our Economic Development Department, um, to strike out a section in um, section five point five point two subsection B that um, indicates that subletting of affordable units is permitted, that is not permitted within the affordable plan, uh, the affordable affordability plan. So we suggest that that portion of the proposed regulation be stricken. Um, under subsection C of that section, um, to add uh, um, to the end of the sentence, um, for distribution of units, um, as well as the general equal distribution of units by location and size, as referenced in the affordability plan recorded on the land records. Um, and then there were just a couple of corrections with not to exceed language, so um, should there need to be any slight revisions to the project, um, in section five point five point five, for example, the building, um, a building not to exceed a total of forty-eight residential units, um, in subsection C, parking spaces not to exceed sixty-seven motor vehicles in the garage. And then also in subset, in section five point five point seven, to eliminate any reference to minimum floor area, which has been eliminated from uh, state statute. So that is no longer a requirement that's permitted within our zoning regulations. Um, and then under maximum height of building, not to exceed sixty feet, and maximum bulkhead height, not to exceed one hundred six feet for any projections above the primary roof from all grade points, including elevator shafts and stairwells. And then under five point five point nine, uh, under parking, there shall be not to exceed sixty-seven spaces in the garage, uh, in a garage that is part of the building. Those were the corrections that I had.
Thank you, and I apologize, I should have uh, invited you to walk through those recommendations.
You guys are doing great.
Commissioner Randolph, are you amenable to amending your motion?
Thank you for clarifying that.
Can we get those in writing? I'm just. Yes. You just provide a lot of information, I'd like to see it in writing. Thank you. Those were emailed to you. They were, okay, great.
Okay, um, Commissioner Harrison?
Oh, that's all I had to say at the moment. Um, sorry.
No, no further comment on the motion?
I mean, I, um, I will be voting, I, I will be voting against this project. Uh, my comments are very similar, um, to the project before this. Um, I, I do believe it'll create significant harm to public safety, especially relative to traffic congestion. Um, my comments are very similar. I don't think the applicant considered, um, the significant built and unbuilt development in this area. Um, and I think it's, I think it's actually really unfortunate that instead of using the extra property on Castle Avenue to add to All Street Parking, this applicant instead chose to expand the size of this project. Um, and again, I will go into ITE. I know some of us differ on this, but I don't believe that the ITE is really an adequate measure of trip generation for this area, or really any area of this, of this, uh, of our town. Um, it could be an industry standard, but I don't think it really properly measures traffic in Fairfield. Um, each parcel, each area, each neighborhood is very unique, and I don't think IT really provides a unique perspective of what the traffic congestion will be. Um, so I think without any special, you know, specific customized review or data, I don't think this commission is really fully informed of what the implications will be of this project. Um, so I will be voting to deny it for those reasons. Um, again, I, I, I do believe even, even in going forward, I think, you know, with eight thirty Gs, we should be given, you know, a lot more information than what we've been getting, especially from this applicant. Um, and I've been disappointed, and um, I hope we can do better in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I, I again, um, echo the comments of Commissioner Randolph, like I do not find this to be certainly a thoughtful project, uh, and I agree with Commissioner Harrison. I, I feel like we could have gotten more information. Uh, at the same time, I feel that under the statute, it is not the, unfortunately, the obligation to, of the applicant to provide info, uh, extensive information. While I think it would be in their best interest oftentimes to do that, I, I don't think they were obligated to provide more than what they did, uh, as far as the industry standard IT data, understanding the, the shortcomings that there may, that may come with that. And so we're left with the evidence in the record, and uh, the evidence in the record I do not find has given us any cause to deny this application, uh, different than the one that we just weighed in on. Um, I think there is certainly, neighbors have raised valid concerns about uh, traffic, uh, existing conditions, but again, as we've discussed in, in many uh, similar eight thirty G applications, existing concerns, existing conditions and uh, and concerns, even valid concerns are not grounds to deny uh, any thirty G application. Um, and absent any um, evidence in the record about, uh, that would substantiate those concerns and quantify those concerns, we, uh, we do not have grounds to deny. Um, and so for that reason, I think this commission, uh, has to vote to approve this application. Any further comments?
Um, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Commissioner Harrison, go ahead.
Sorry, Commissioner Levy, I've already spoken, so go ahead.
I was just going to question whether or not, with only four of us here, whether or not we should proceed to a vote, or whether it should be tabled until there are additional commissioners to weigh in.
We voted on the previous one, right?
So, uh, there would be, given that there's a motion on the table, I mean, ultimately that decision, uh, we have to vote on the motion on the table unless the motion is withdrawn. Uh, so I, we can discuss, um, as part of this motion, whether we want to continue, but this will require a vote on this motion unless withdrawn.
So I'm getting the hint from Commissioner Levy that we should withdraw the motion, and I always defer to his good judgment, um, so I'm prepared to withdraw the motion.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
We voted on a previous um, application with the same amount of commissioners here, so would that be null and void, too? Because I'm seeing.
No.
I would have set a precedent to move forward with this application, so I'm a bit confused.
I don't think this nullifies any previous vote because nothing is stopping us from voting with four members. It seems to me that Commissioner Levy's suggestion was about what we, uh, was a matter of preference uh, and not a requirement. We have.
I, I had no issue with, I mean, I think we should go forward, just as we did with the other application. I'm not seeing a good reason of not to go forward with it.
Well, I can, I'm going to withdraw my motion.
I'll withdraw the second.
Okay, do we have another motion?
I move to table.
I, I would just say this is really arbitrary. We voted on a one with four members before. This is very arbitrary, and I'm very disappointed in my fellow commissioners that we would do this.
Understood. Um, do I have a second on that motion?
Hey, hey, let me, let me just make a comment.
Well, hang on, after Commissioner Levy made the motion.
Please, go ahead, yeah.
Yeah, I think just, uh, you know, uh, when we vote on this, uh, our chairman, uh, is recused on this matter. Uh, Commissioner Braun isn't here, we don't have any, uh, um, any of the alternates present, and it's clear from the discussion that there's no clear consensus, unlike the previous motion. Uh, and I'm concerned that we have, uh, just like when a case, uh, might be heard by three judges and then it's, uh, later on heard by a full panel of, uh, six judges, uh, we often get a different result when you have more parties involved in, uh, full expression of ideas. And based upon that, and, you know, the fact is, uh, the only way this could pass would be on a unanimous vote, and that's uh, different than any other situation, uh, where seven members. and that's different than any other situation where you've got seven members, and you can, there's room for dissent, which won't necessarily, a single vote being sufficient to deny an application. And based, and considering, you know, just the, the gravity of these eight thirty Gs, I think in light of the lack of clear consensus, that we should defer until we have more members of the commission present to fully address it. And based upon that, that's why I feel the motions should be withdrawn at this time.
Thank you, Commissioner Randolph.
Yeah, and I just wanted to emphasize, we are following Robert's Rules of Order, and we are deferring to, we, as we've expressed, there is support to pass this, and we're deferring to Commissioner Harrison's inclination to oppose this. So we are, the, the motion, the motion, had we voted, would be passed, and we're deferring to potentially any additional dissent that's not represented here, so.
Commissioner Harrison.
Um, I, I stand by what I said earlier. I've been prepared to vote on this. I think the others have been too. I think we should have probably had this discussion before we put motions on the table tonight for both of these applications, because we ran to the issue potentially with both of them. But I'm, I think I'm in the minority here, so I'm not gonna belabor this point. I'll be prepared again to vote the next time.
Thank you. I mean, it, it sounds like, it sounds like everyone was prepared to vote on this. I certainly was. I, I do, had the motion not been withdrawn, certainly would have voted and made my position clear, but also understand the distinction that Commissioner Levy made, so I'm not going to oppose a motion to table. I'd have supported any motion, that motion to, that has previously been on the table. I will support the motion that is currently on the table. So let's, unless there's any further questions or comments, put this one to a vote. All those in favor of the motion to table this item, I'm sorry?
Do you want to table to a date certain?
To our next meeting.
Okay, September second? Thank you.
All those in favor of the motion to table to September second, raise your hand or say aye. All those opposed?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes three to one. We'll call our chair back.
All right. Old Business Sub D, zoning regulation amendment, application of fourteen seventy-seven Congress Street LLC to establish a new section five point four, Congress Street Affordable Housing District, pursuant to section eight thirty G, the Connecticut General Statutes, and fourteen seventy-seven Congress Street Zone Change Application of fourteen seventy-seven Congress Street LLC to establish a Congress Street Affordable Housing District on land presently zoned, residents triple A. Taking a quick look, is everybody up to speed on this?
Um, I'd like more time, if we have it. I think we do.
You do have more times. So a motion to table, feel free to start us off.
I'd like to make a motion to table to September second, please.
Next week, yeah.
Yeah.
We have time for that, right? When, our P O C D is on the ninth?
Correct.
Is there a second? Corcello, seconds. Commissioner Harrison?
Um, I just need some time to catch up. I had a death of my family, and just would appreciate more time. I'm just getting up to speed on a lot of things these days, so thank you.
Commissioner Corcello?
Nothing, nothing further. I'm happy to defer to Commissioner Harrison here.
Okay. Yeah, we have our deadline is November, September twenty-fifth, so we have time. I do think, I forget, when did this end, this hearing?
Actually, I, I recalculated based on the end of the hearing, and we have until September eleventh on this application.
Okay, I'm glad we brought that up. Okay, so let's be prepared, I think, to vote on the second. I'd like to keep the ninth wide open for P O C D. This ended, when did this end? July, right?
Correct. Yes, it ended on July eighth.
So farther, farther in time, you know, just kind of forget as well. So certainly, we have a lot, we've had a lot, but too much delay, I think, doesn't help either, so. If you're okay with the second, let's, let's keep that in the back of our minds as somewhat of a deadline. Anything further?
No, thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Corcello. Appreciate it.
Of course.
All right, all those in favor, please say aye, or raise your hands. Passes unanimously. Yeah, next item, Items I and J, zoning regulation amendment, application of seven thirty Commerce Drive LLC to amend section thirteen point fourteen point four, transit-oriented development park overlay of the zoning regulations to allow public open spaces with public art components to apply to a portion of the non-residential component for mixed-use projects, and special permit application of seven thirty Commerce Drive LLC for a mixed-use project consisting of ninety units, ground floor commercial, hundred eighteen parking spaces, and a public plaza with a public art component. Now, I call them together, but we may need to say, take them separately. Is there again comments?
It's up to you guys.
Well, that's, that's a fair point. Let's, let me ask this, is, are people ready to vote on this?
I prefer to table.
Okay.
I prefer to table.
All right, that's, okay. And that, Commissioner Corcello?
I'll move to table this to September second also.
I'll second.
All right. All right, again, I, same kind of comments. We have a deadline of, of October. This we just finished, so I guess if we really, this can be another one that gets pushed out, I guess, from the second if it needs to be. Uh, because we just finished this last week and the week before.
We did, two weeks ago.
All right, so we're not, this one's a lot more fresh than the other, other ones. But let's see where we are, September second. Okay. All kind of, sorry. All those in favor of the motion to table, please say aye, or raise your hand.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Okay. I saw just Attorney Bellis come out too, so. You mind that? Dragging him down, yeah. Thank you very much. Oh, sorry, yeah, thank you. I'll call, and we can take a little, we'll see about recess. Zoning Regulation Amendment, application of PermaRose Development LLC contract purchaser for revision to the zoning regulations to add section five point five point one, Black Rock Affordable Housing Affordable District, excuse me, to allow the construction of affordable multifamily housing pursuant to section eight thirty G, the Connecticut General Statutes, and a forty-two twenty-one Black Rock Turnpike, application of PermaRose Development LLC contract purchaser to rezone the parcel located at forty-one Black Rock Turnpike to the Black Rock Affordable District, zone on land presently zoned as triple A. Well, I don't, oh, there's Attorney Bellis. So I honestly forget where we are with this. I think we're done with public comment, are we not? Attorney Bellis?
I have an opportunity to respond.
That's right, you do. Oh, come on up, you're up first. So as I recall, you were responding to a sheet that was, that shows the more elongated access and entry, the access to this parcel over the Hartford Healthcare Lot. And then I think the traffic supplements, and then the, what, the geography map showing the distance to the Merritt Parkway?
Correct.
Okay. Let's start there.
So I have just Evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission staff, the public. My name, again, for the record, is Joel Green. I practice law brick for with the offices of Greenfield Rose, and once again, I appear before you this evening on behalf of the Merritt Parkway Conservancy, Greenfield Hill Village Improvement Society, and Greenfield Hunt. So I am, as the chair indicated, responding to the drawing which was submitted by the applicant. And I have provided the commission with a short letter from Psycho Engineering. Mr. Monteleone may not be present this evening, unfortunately, due to a scheduling conflict, so this is his letter after reviewing the revised plan. I think that, just for the sake of clarity, the document that we are, in terms of the site access plan, the document that we are referring to is not, as I understand it, this was merely a document that was referred to by the engineer for the applicant as a concept that he was working on. It is not the conceptual site plan that accompanied the application or any of the supporting documents, but rather, it was merely, once again, a document that the engineer had referenced, and I think he displayed it in the record, and then the chair understandably asked that it be submitted. But I understand that this is not, if I'm correct, the conceptual site plan that is accompanying the tech proposal.
The exhibits, whatever, to the regulations, I don't think has this, but it was being brought forth as a, I don't know anymore. That's something that could be supplemented, I guess.
So that's what I want to clarify. I would also like to provide the commission with a copy of two point four four that I referenced, which is our, from our town zoning regulations, just so that it's in the record, it can be part of this discussion. So oh, yeah, thank you. And I guess while I'm handing out documents, I'm also going to, just for the convenience of the commission, and I apologize to Commissioner Harrison. But these are, and there's two each of these documents, so they're in pairs. One is the, this exhibit drawing, and the other is the actual site plan that is the conceptual plan. So you'll just see, you only need to take one set of two.
Oh, got it.
So I'm still a little bit baffled, because the applicant chose this process of submitting a text amendment and a map amendment, and the applicant repeatedly indicates that pursuant to, the applicant referenced Connecticut State Regulation eight dash thirty G seven, which really, I think, was a little bit of confusion. But what that regulation says is that the commission may adopt regulations for affordable housing zone, zoning text amendments and map amendments. It says that the commission may adopt a regulation requiring conceptual plans as part of a text amendment, a map amendment. It doesn't go beyond that, but clearly, we did, as a town, this commission adopted point four four, which does set forth some standards for the conceptual site plan. And while they don't have to be finished construction drawings, there are some requirements. And among those requirements, tonight, we're just again talking about the development roads and traffic circulation is the, the limit of tonight's discussion. But we, we do have this problem where you have a text amendment and a map amendment that's being submitted. And so the applicant references eight dash thirty, and obviously, we've discussed the law, which draws to public health safety issues, as the, really, the issues of concern and that the, of which the commission must balance against the need for affordable housing. So that's where the commission sits right now with this text amendment. And all we have is this conceptual drawing. That conceptual drawing is on the other side of the scale from the, from the application. So once again, and looking at this regulation, which proposes a massive development, we're, we're balancing that based on a conceptual drawing, but under the regulation, it must show roads and traffic circulation. So so here we sit, and the fact of the matter is, I've submitted the letter by Mr. Monteleone. You heard from Mr. Monteleone, and the applicant has offered nothing, no evidence at all on the safety of the accessway, in terms of these issues that, that have been raised. And in the applicant's traffic consultant didn't address that eastbound traffic access issue at all. So the evidence on traffic safety, on, that, that Mr. Monteleone addresses in this letter, and the, his comments at last week's hearing were that it is unsafe, that there is a one hundred percent likelihood of harm, because a collision will result. He said one hundred percent, and the applicant's traffic report is absolutely silent. So the only evidence on safety of the access is that it is unsafe. If you look at, and the reason I gave you these two drawings, and once again, I apologize, Commissioner Harrison, but basically, if you look at the document that is in the record from last week that I had submitted, which is an enlargement of the entrance, and then the document, this, once again, document that the engineer is working on. First of all, Mr. Monteleone confirms that this design would be unsafe, but more significantly, for the purposes of this commission, this is not the conceptual drawing. It's clear that this drawing relies and uses the property at forty-one eighty-five Black Rock Turnpike, which is not a part of this application. It may not be considered by the commission, because forty-one eighty-five, once again, was not identified in any of the notices for this application. The owner of forty-one eighty-five is not a party to this application. And so this, this fails as a concept, because there's no, there's no basis. This is, you know, basically a fantasy using a neighboring property. So we build that on top of my comment that there's no evidence that there is safe access. And you can also see, based on Mr. Monteleone's comments, and I think you can see that, first of all, this is using, not only is it using forty-one eighty-five Black Rock Turnpike, but it's eliminating parking spaces from an approved, recorded plan. And if you look at the deed that I had submitted last week, or forty-one eighty-five Black Rock Turnpike, it specifically references the design, the site plans that were previously approved, both by the Inland Wetlands Commission and the Plan and Zoning Commission, and that those documents are recorded documents. And that's an approved development upon which the Hartford Healthcare Plan was approved by this commission. So it violates the special permit for the Hartford Healthcare Building. It also, based on Mr. Monteleone's comments, creates an unsafe situation where parking spaces are being eliminated from the site plan and are being moved into this driveway in a manner that Mr. Monteleone confirmed is not safe, because cars would be, in theory, backing out into that same area where a truck is coming around the corner. So so the, the only, once again, the only evidence is that it is unsafe. I would, once again, urge the commission to be very judicious on the wording of the text amendment, particularly where it refers to site plan approval. And that's on page five, in, in section five point five point twelve, standards for site plan application. And it speaks to, once again, the site plan must be approved if it complies with this regulation, and if it complies with eight dash thirty G. And it says the final site plan shall be substantially the same. And as to the standards for driveways, it merely says all driveways shall be asphalt or concrete pavers. So I see a future where right now the applicant is saying. The way this is procedurally gone, the applicant says, well, this is all subject to conceptual site plans. And if and when the applicant ever comes back with a fully compliant site plan. The applicant's gonna say, well, it complies with this regulation. And therefore the applicant's gonna urge the commission to grant it so that we kind of get into this funny. You know, heads heads we win, tails you lose situation and I understand. The chair, we've talked about this twice now that eight dash thirty G. The applicant seems to be agreeing right now that eight dash thirty G applies, but it's not. Really fully clear how that's all gonna roll in the future with an application.
What the I missed, I think I missed your point with the pavers, when you mentioned the pavers.
It says, if you look at five point five point twelve.
All those regulations.
Yeah, the standards for driveways. First of all, the applicant suggests that it's be substantially the same as the conceptual site plan, that's one standard for approval. A says all driveways shall be asphalt or concrete pavers, so that's merely what it's composed of. And I think the applicant would could make an argument or may likely in the future make an argument that, you know. Basically, it looks like the conceptual site plan and it's asphalt driveways with pavers.
I see, okay, okay.
Somehow the commission is.
Yeah, okay, I understand your point now, sorry.
So, sure. So. So once again, where we sit right now, we have this proposed text amendment, this proposed map amendment. And the commission, there's no evidence not to find. That there's a public health and safety issue raised by the geometry of the access drive. That's the only evidence in the record. So I know my comments are limited tonight to to this drawing. And I did go through the, in terms of addressing Mr. Sullivan's subsequent report. Again, that that similarly, that addresses future developments in the area, it doesn't. Address at all safe access into the site and. So I I guess I would also urge the commission to once again. I take issue and if you'll just give me the latitude to say I take issue with with counsel's comment that. My proposed additional regulation section that says that no site plan shall be approved while moratorium is in place. It was the applicant's decision to go forward with just a text and map amendment. The next step would be a another eight dash thirty G application seeking site plan approval. The regulation is something that the, as the commission is aware, sort of elective by the applicant. The site plan application would stand on its own, it too is obviously an eight dash thirty G application. And so I really disagree with counsel's comment that 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 wouldn't apply because. It is an eight dash thirty G application, there is a moratorium and while. While I would once again reiterate that. The commission cannot possibly. Adopt a regulation that would allow for two hundred and eight units on a driveway that can't be accessed safely, but that's not a regulation. That is supportable even under, you know, the rigorous, two hundred and four units. Under the rigorous eight dash thirty G standard, but also I believe the commission could. Adopt this section of the regulation and that's all I have.
Thank you.
I don't know if there are any questions.
We're good.
Thanks.
Thank you, Tygrin. Formerly ends all the comment, I probably said that already. Attorney Bellis, were you in the middle of your rebuttal, I don't remember, you didn't start rebuttal at all?
I did, I did the rebuttal, I'm gonna respond to.
That's what I thought, okay, I just, I'm sorry, I just didn't.
I was responding to this little teeny segment.
Which is fine, I just honestly just, I forgot where we were.
That's where we were. So I uploaded this afternoon Jason Edwards. Response to this Simcoe letter, it's dated August twenty six twenty twenty five. And it should be in, I I confirm what in the line it's been uploaded, yeah, so it's part of the record.
I didn't see that in the record at all.
See it either. I just didn't, I mean, I just.
I haven't read it, I've been looking at it right.
At five o'clock.
It's it's it was in there.
Yeah, it's here.
And is it purely rebuttal, I just read it.
It's a short response.
Letter from Simcoe?
No, it's a response to that.
It's it's here, J E.
Response to Simcoe, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Fifteen forty two. Very rebuttalish.
Second page.
There is.
No, it's okay, I'm sorry, he's.
Hey, hey, I have not seen this, attorney Bellis did not do the courtesy. Of providing me with a copy when he filed it.
Well, I got this. Last minute.
Well, you got, you I you got it from me, it's when I got it and submitted it.
Yeah, so I I had like a couple of hours to have my engineer do it.
Seems rebuttal to me now.
Yeah.
I mean, I just looked at it now. Strikes me as rebuttal. I mean, he gets the last word. I don't, you know, trying to keep this, I don't know, I mean, listen, the fact that it happened all within hours is what it is, but. Process and the procedure is not not unlike what we normally do over a matter of weeks, so. I'm just gonna just let it, if there's anything that's ma- major, we'll special, but it looks like it looks rebuttal to me as well. It's literally if you see it.
That was the intent of this letter to respond to the Simcoe letter, nothing more. So I disagree with Attorney Green's statement that the commission does not have. We should must deny this because there is a safety issue with the driveway, again, these are conceptual site plans. Meaning that. That they can change. And when the final site plans are submitted, what Jason Edwards had done in the drawing that shows the elongated. Driveway was to show that. That the conceptual site plans are a work in progress and that they will be. Changes to this particular driveway and he was contemplating this kind of change, that's why it was shown to the commission. And the reason for that was to allow large vehicles such as trucks or fire apparatus to get into the site and get out. And then the first statement by Mr. Simcoe's company. He agrees that the auto turn analysis for a large truck entering the site. From eastbound Black Rock Turnpike shows that it can adequately access the site driveway, that was his first point.
So let me just ask this though, I mean, when I look at what's up on the screen, this, let me start with this basic idea. Are you now saying that this should be appended to your exhibit in the proposed regulations or you?
It's part of the conception, it's part of the conceptual site plan, it's not a final site.
I know, but in.
And I did upload it.
I know, but your regulations say it has to be substantially similar to the exhibits, the exhibit is the Huntington. Drawing, I'll say. The Huntington drawing doesn't have this.
Correct.
So the first question I have is, I think that's probably what I was asking, if I didn't, I probably should have asked. Is this what you're proposing now to be included in your exhibit to your regulations?
As as conceptual part, as a conceptual site plan, not as a final site.
And that raises an issue and I just don't recall where we were, I just don't recall when we discussed this. If we just, if when I brought, when we were bringing this up, I was asking you this pointed question then. Because if you did it at your initial, then maybe that's okay, now. Potentially is a pro, I don't know if it's a problem or not, but let's leave it at that, so. If I'm looking at this, what I see to be the bolded outline.
Yeah.
Come on, keep helping out as best you can, I'm sorry.
I really follow you, go ahead.
Really bolded outline looks to be the the original easement, right?
I would agree with that.
Yeah, to your right now. Right, so this is going outside of that.
That is correct.
And you're losing parking on, what is the address, forty one eighty five, forty one eighty five, right?
Four one eight zero.
Four one eight five.
Well, the Hartford Health.
The Hartford Health.
Yeah, I I know what you're talking about.
So. Must be across the street, yeah.
You're right.
Now. Forty one eight five wasn't noticed as part of this, I don't, the easement go, you're going outside of the easement. Not even immaterially, you're knocking three, three parking spots out of it. I mean, I'm not even sure if I can consider this because of the impact of forty one eighty five.
Yeah, I that's why I say this is conceptual, when we come in with the site plan, you would have more information, I'm not sure that you can. You're not making a final determination at this point in time as to the way this driveway looks. Because I haven't given you a final site plan, what we're showing, the reason this was shown to the commission was. That there is a way, that there is a feasible way that this this particular location of the driveway can be used. That was the purpose.
No, I get that, but I mean, same time though, going into. It's conceptual fine, but it's conceptually going into a different parcel and knocking off three parking spots. I assume those three on the bottom are trying to address that, but now you put them in a. You know, roadway by all accounts.
I'm not sure that's gonna stay there forever, I don't know that.
I mean, part of me, I listen, this is up to you, I guess, I I'm not sure. How well we can really consider this to begin with because it goes on to somebody else's park, somebody else's property fully. It's not even the easement aspect of it.
When we come in with a full, when we come in with a final site plan, there would obviously have to be permission granted, right? Either through an easement or otherwise.
Well, I guess that's.
Yeah, that's the point, but at this point in time.
I guess the, at this point in time, question I guess I have more concretely to you is, should this be appended to your regulations? Proposed regulations to be substantially similar to, or should this be not be done that? Not be appended to your regulations and just say that you're thinking about other ways of doing the site plan, the access plan.
For sure, I'm not trying to, I I don't care either way.
That's fine.
Yeah, I don't care either way, I if if you wanted in to show that.
No, it's up to you, and I'm, I'm trying to understand it and if it's kind of like, leave it up to us, I'm fine with that answer.
Okay.
You kind of, you're leaving it up to us, it's hard to, you know, at that point, but I I that's what I need to understand is what is in front of us.
Yeah, it's it's before you because it shows that it can be feasibly done in a way of getting a large truck in here. By using this kind of geometry, that's that's the purpose of it, is it a final design?
Not saying it's final though, but the.
Not final.
The key though is your regulations depend on a conceptual site plan to be substantially similar to.
Yeah, so.
So is this part of that?
It can, the answer is it can certainly be part of it, the answer is it certainly can be part of it because. This is something that we are considering.
Make it, we can't make it part of the application, you have to.
That's partly my question is, are you asserting that this is part of your application?
I have no, all right, let me make it clear then, I I will answer that question, yes. I did upload it when we, when you asked me to and I did give it to Attorney Green the next day.
That's what I need the answer to.
Okay, sorry, I'm confused.
No, no, that's fine, that's, this is why we do this.
So it's my position that. There is, there is nothing in the record that would prevent. A final site plan being presented to this commission that would show. That there is vehicles can safely get in and or out, there would be more information needed, obviously, an easement. Perhaps where these other spaces are gonna go on the other property, but in agreement with that owner, I recognize that. We're just not there yet, that's all. But the long and the short of it is that. That there is. In response, there's a, my letter from Mr. Edwards is in response to the Simcoe letter and that's what I'm offering in rebuttal.
Attorney, Commissioner Randolph, excuse me.
Um, so. Just just to be clear, by showing this property, basically your turning radius here. You're assuming at least two things related to the associated property, you're assuming that. The associated property can get a variance parking. You're assuming that you that.
I don't know if the word variance, but go ahead. Could move the parking.
There's an exception, you're eliminating parking spaces.
It may be moved to some other location.
Property, taking parking away from one property, eliminating it entirely, so then you. Our town ordinance doesn't permit parking, sure, parking. Except under specific circumstances, so I'm just trying to clarify.
Let me share it, I agree with you on that, Commissioner.
But but there needs to be some address by an unrelated party.
Correct. An easement, yeah.
Not an easement, I'm saying a parking.
No, the parking technically is on their property.
No, it's it's not.
I know, but that's a, that's an easement that the, that. Forty forty two twenty one has that easement, the property there is owned by Hartford Healthcare.
This is owned by Hartford Healthcare, right?
Yeah, part of it is.
Let me, if I'm wrong, let me know, I mean, the easements, the access there is an easement, right? Benefiting forty two twenty one, but the property while it has an easement benefiting forty two twenty one. It's owned by Hartford Healthcare.
As a number, would it help if I put up the site plan showing, well, let me ask my questions and then you can.
Yeah, go ahead, I mean to cut you off.
So there there need to be a series of steps by an unrelated party in order to accommodate. Your the app, your application.
Agree with that, I agree with that.
So parking is one of them, granting of an additional easement area is a second.
I would agree with that.
And then. And then approval, of course, by state agencies, outside agency approval.
Like O S T. Yes.
As well as, as well as any environmental approvals.
I don't know if there's any environmental approvals needed with that driveway.
On the site.
On the site would be wetlands, correct, yes.
So those are my, so you're relying on a third, an unrelated party to this matter in order to get. That your approach.
When I come in with my final site plans, would I would present to you those those approvals, i.e. easements. Where the parking spaces went.
You're you're asking, but you're asking for a text amendment. So in our text amendment, we would have have to specify that, correct?
Right.
If you need outside, so we're, you'd need approval from.
Means, but. Okay, sorry, finish your thought, I'm sorry.
But that's that's what our text memo would need to specify that, correct?
I don't know how it could.
Okay.
Not sure, that has to be more food for thought. Let me ask you this, because I want this to be clear too, you've proposed this as an alternative. Are you suggesting, is any party you're suggesting that this needs to be done for safety? Meaning if I said, you know what, we can't do this for whatever reason. And I go back to the initial Huntington drawing. Is this now some evidence that the Huntington drawing is unsafe?
No, th- this was presented so that it could be shown. That a large truck could get into this property.
Well, that way, I mean, can, but I guess have.
Coming from the direction that is shown on.
Or can we show that a large truck can get into the property without this?
I believe it can, it just would not be as easy, that's the problem.
And correct me if, these new three parking spaces that are down there, at least being shown.
Yeah, they're.
That's in the easement area, but that area while it's in the easement area for forty two twenty one Black Rock Turnpike. But that area, while it's in the easement area for forty two, twenty one Black Rock Turnpike, that property is owned by Hartford Healthcare, right?
Can't answer that, Mr. Chairman. I don't know that for, I don't know that for certain.
I'll figure it. That's an order. Attorney Green, I know, it's over. I it.
First of all.
I just don't want to say something that's not.
That's fine, and I'll, we'll figure it. I can figure that out with staff. That's fine. That's not.
I don't know where the easement ends is my problem.
No, that's fine. I'll I'll worry about that later.
Okay.
I think that's a pretty standard.
Okay. That that would be my response.
Okay, anything further?
Uh, no, sir.
Commissioner, I'll leave it.
Yeah, I'm just trying to get a handle on this. It seems to me that the the minutia of the driveway, whether it's safe or not safe, in the context of a text amendment, is somewhat academic at this point and very difficult for us to determine. Would you agree with that? Just when looking at the text amendment, it's not going to address where the driveway is.
I would agree with you that, generally speaking, a text amendment would not tell you anything about the driveway because it's a text amendment, that you you're going to glean that information when you get the final site plan. And that's how you'll analyze it.
And we get a site plan, we'll get a final site plan, which will be, you know, substantially in accordance with this. And I guess my, you know, which, whether or not this is safe or not, we would fully address it at that point.
Correct.
And obviously, if it involves getting extending easements or getting cooperation in neighbors, that would have to be part of that site plan.
Hundred percent true.
Uh, and I don't know whether or not it's possible, but let's say you decide, well, we can't really do it, or Hartford Health says, no, we're not going to cooperate. Uh, is it your position that you could come back with a site plan, quote unquote, substantially in compliance, which might move the driveway, you know, a couple hundred feet to the west, move the building slightly so you got room for it, and just have a driveway going straight in some other direction?
I would consider that substantially similar, yes. It would be part of the final site plan. That has to work, yes.
Okay, so at at this stage, even whether or not this is where the driveway is going to be, is subject to the final site plan.
I agree with that statement.
As long as it's, Attorney Green's shaking his head, and it's, I guess it's a question of what is substantial compliance in an application of this side.
I I think I answered the chairman's question that I put in that language, that that it be substantially similar so that I wasn't trying to eye the ball on the commission and give, get a text amendment approved and come in with a radically different plan. You know, whether there's an adjustment to the driveway, I don't think that's a radically different plan. It's still going to be three buildings with two hundred and four units in their locations with a with a driveway coming in. So what I, I think my example was, I'm not presenting a text amendment amendment and showing you a conceptual plan and then coming back in with one, I think I used the word Empire State Building, where all two hundred and four units are in one building, right? And and you're saying that does not look like what you presented to me. If there are changes to the driveway, I I, I I just, I fully expect that there will be. There might, or there may be. Uh, could there be changes near the wetlands? There could be. I don't know.
Could there be, could you conceivably come in with two buildings and a hundred and thirty units?
Yes. Yes, and that that could happen, yeah. And and I don't see the harm in that because in zoning regulations, you're, you know, there's a maximum, excuse me.
It's less.
It's less, yeah. Can't be more. I agree with that. It could be, it could be substantially less.
Yeah, but you just kind of, I think you kind of went against your own point, though. You can't, you said yourself, you don't want to come in with the Empire State with all the units in there. But at the same time, you said it's okay, it's substantially similar if you go from three buildings to two.
Yeah.
Then why not three, I mean, why not three to one then? And I would, I mean, that's.
No, I I think the commissioner said, could I reduce the units? The answer is obviously yes.
I thought you said buildings. Did you say buildings?
He said units.
And building. I said units. Well, it could be two buildings.
Could be two buildings.
My question.
And let me ask you this, if, then let me ask you.
But now, it wouldn't be two buildings with the same number of units, no.
How many units total on this thing? Sorry.
Two oh four.
So right now, you have two oh four among three buildings.
Correct.
Is something substantially similar if it comes in with two oh four amongst two buildings?
No, I don't think so.
Okay. I thought you said that. That's where I was confused.
That wouldn't, I I I didn't mean to say that.
No, that's fine. I thought you asked for buildings.
No, he said to me, could I, could you have a hundred and thirty?
Yeah, hundred and thirty.
I said, yes.
Under thirty units in two buildings.
No, that, okay, I'm sorry, then I missed, yes, then you, I misunderstood it. Okay. It's not substantially similar, but it's under the, it's under the, okay, rubric of footprint, I guess. Okay. Okay.
May I trust the amendment?
I think rebuttals rebuttal.
No, I, I think we've. No, let's leave it that because I, we talked about this elongated access, not to rehash everything. We talked about this as initial presentation. And, you know, I I don't recall what was said as far as was it made or the application or not. But it was addressed, we got rebuttal in, I I think the point's been, we're pretty well informed of what the point is, but some of the implications are.
Thank you very much, all of you.
Anything further for Attorney Bellis? All right, so I'll close the hearing on this matter, on these two matters. And that being the last, you know, the last matters, right?
Yes.
I'll turn the meeting. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.